We call a meeting in order. This is a common council meeting of Monday, April 4th, 2016. Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Bicavich.
Here.
Verhalen.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the approval of minutes of March 15th, 2016.
Kurkowski will make a motion to approve the minutes of March 15th, 2016.
Bicavich, second.
About that. Roll call.
Alderman Bicavich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Under recognition, we have two council proclamations. The first one, item number four, is a consideration of Council Proclamation Number 16-05. Congratulations to Mason Baraboe for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. They won't read them at this time. We will either present them in person or mail them to their family. So congratulations to both Eagle Scouts. Need a motion on number four?
We'll move to approve Council Proclamation 16-05. Congratulations to Mason Baraboe for receiving the Eagle Scout Award.
Kurkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Bicavich.
Aye.
And the second proclamation is Council Proclamation Number 16-06. Congratulations to Nicholas T. Koss for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Motion.
We'll move to approve Council Proclamation 16-06. Congratulations to Nicholas T. Koss for receiving the Eagle Scout Award.
Kurkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Bicavich.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Under public hearings, we have three public hearings tonight. The first one is item six is a special assessment. Consider a proposed special assessment for water main and opportunances for project number 16-104 on both sides of South 15th Street from approximately 50 feet north of East Woodview Avenue to approximately 1,100 feet north of East Woodview Avenue. That is located in a 3rd and 4th district. City Clerk will now read the public hearing notice.
Public hearing number one is a notice of public hearing on special assessments for water main and apprentices in accordance with Resolution Number 11687-031-516, project number 16104. All property fronting on both sides of South 15th Avenue from approximately 50 feet north of East Woodview Avenue to approximately 1,100 feet north of East Woodview Avenue dated this 15th day of March, 2016.
All right, Ron. Welcome.
Good evening, Ron Princeoff, Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility. This project, and it's up here on the screen, it's an 1,100-foot water main extension that would connect two dead ends in 15th Avenue. The commission has seen fit to send this to council for their consideration. It does specially assess both sides of 15th Avenue in the 3rd and 4th districts with one caveat in that there are two properties along that corridor that will be excluded from a special assessment. And they are noted on the screen. One is 9345 South 15th, the other is 9300 South 15th. So that is reflected in the revised resolution that you should have in front of you. Again, to give you some background on this, the Northbrook subdivision, which is south of our project, our proposed project, we had a break on Ryan Road and we took out about 200 people from water. And that's what really precipitated this whole project. And the commission has seen fit to send it to you for your consideration to specially assess those benefited properties along the corridor. Thank you.
Want me to hold?
Can I have the public?
Yeah. You gonna read the public hearing notice, or you gonna read it? Or you want me to read it? Oh, you read it already?
I read it.
All right, I'll make the calls then. Anything else?
One more thing, and that the cost of the project is roughly $361,000, of which the utility will probably be paying approximately 2/3 of that cost. So over 20 years' time, we are actually paying quite a bit of the cost of this one.
Is that typical?
No, it's not. It's a combination of two things. It's what we're willing to do to get this project done, and number two, the assessment rate as it sits right now from that resolution in '07 has not been changed. So we've got nine years of increase in construction costs that are not reflected in that $47 per foot rate. Thank you.
Ron, before you leave, could you just?
Oh, one other thing. Let me just talk about the backup, the backup plan.
Well, can I get a question in before the public or not?
Sure.
Do you have the adjusted numbers from the two exclusions?
Yes.
What is it? Yeah, what are those?
Well, do you want the total assessments? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, what you started with and what it is now.
Well, what we started with was, it was approximately $30,000 in adjustments. So the level of assessments went down $30,000 by subtracting those two properties from the assessment roll.
Ron, do you have color and why?
Oh, hold on. Let's get the first call for public comment before we get too far down the road here. So this is the first call for public comment on this item. I don't have anybody in the audience that's filled out a sheet. So I'm gonna kick it over to, if Alderman Toman was finished, I'll kick it over to Alderman Gale.
Sorry, Ron. Can you shed some color for the council on why the two properties that were appearing to be in the or not now?
Sure. If you look on the west side, 9345, that's the property along the corridor with the longest frontage. And gentleman came in, interestingly enough, to my office. And we, it turned out the city records were incorrect in terms of who owns that property. He sold it to MMSD in 2014. That's not reflected in city records. So I did some more research on the property, and I found a certified survey map that actually says for that outlot that's highlighted there that there is no building allowed on that property. So there would be no benefit to that property, not to mention there's a lot of floodway on that property as well. Same holds true for the 9300 address. That's mainly a floodway situation that we have there. That it's really not buildable because of all the floodway that encompasses the property itself.
Is one of your criteria what you can special assess?
Well, if it doesn't benefit the property, then we really shouldn't be specially assessing. So.
Okay. I don't have any audience members filling out this form. So you indicating to me you don't have any public comment on this item? Okay. This is a public comment appearance request form. It's a way so that I can, I don't have to have you go through all your name and address and stuff. So they're in that, right where the gentleman's sitting.
Pass them around, Mayor.
Sure, if you want to. It just makes it easier.
I'm glad to help you.
I appreciate that. So this is our first call. So fill one of those out, and we'll get started. I think we'll put a slide up next time and walk people through it. Are there pens back there? And then just bring them up here, and I'll call your name. You have the mic. First up is Nicole Vanslow.
So just wondering what the cost, if 2/3 is being paid, what's going to be the cost, the assessment, on the main and on the lateral?
Yeah. Why don't you, Ron, why don't you see if you can grab one of the other table mics? You can just answer the people directly, since you're the expert on it? Is that your only question? Okay.
All right. What was your address, ma'am?
It's 90... Read your address, please. 9233 South 15th.
9233 South 15th. The assessment would be $7,665.23.
All right. Next one is Steve Shanson. 9264 South 15th.
Yeah, I have the same question. What will the cost be?
Your address?
Yes, 9264 South 15th Avenue.
9264 South 15th. 165 feet of frontage and lateral, $10,857.0.
Okay. Also, what's the thought of the alternative of coming off of Kinder Lane?
That is the backup plan.
Because if, say, 2/3 of the people don't want this, most of us are all on fixed income, we're all retirees. So I don't know how, you know, create a burden like that to put on our tax bill every month, another $100, and what, take 10 years to pay that off?
We recognize that it is a burden, and that's why we do have a backup plan.
And how much will the backup plan cost compared to running it down 15th Avenue?
Well, certainly.
Complete that loop?
It certainly costs less, but the benefit is not as good in terms of flow and water quality. So if you got a main trunk line running down 15th Avenue, 12-inch, and actually coming back down Ryan Road, and it actually increases in size up to a 20-inch, you're getting a lot more flow coming through that pipe, and as a result, better water quality.
Well, back in 85, when they ran sewer down 15th Avenue, the city didn't want to put water then, and I knew for sure it's gonna bite us again. And sure enough, because they all, we don't have the money now. So now I'm retired, and now they're gonna stick it to us again. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Emil Kling. It looks like 3240 Woodview.
Right. My question is this. Is my property gonna become buildable if that water goes through?
It's buildable right now. I verified that with the city stormwater engineer, and there is space to build a lot, or even divide it into two lots there.
Can I get a letter to that effect?
That you'd have to go through the city.
Well, that's what we're here for right now.
Can you pull the mic? Your request was for a letter?
Well, my request is for a letter saying that this property is buildable, okay? Not that the sewer and waters in that area.
I would say that if the city deemed it a buildable or non-buildable according to what you're saying, then you could request that they write you a letter to that effect.
Because if it's not buildable, I don't know what I'd want a lateral for, the cost of $3,000.
Ron, is this property part of this project?
Yes.
What was it? Your address?
The... He owns the property 9330 South 15th Avenue?
All right. What was the address?
9330.
Okay.
So it's an L-shaped, it's actually a L-shaped lot that fronts both Woodview and 15th Avenue.
That's just under 9300 there?
Correct.
Okay. And your testimony is that it is buildable?
Yes, I verified that with the city today.
Okay.
With sand without the water?
It really doesn't matter. I mean, you can dig water through a floodway if you need to.
But it's already buildable?
It's already buildable.
Okay.
Okay, thank you much.
Next up is David L. Hickman. 9280 South 15th Avenue. Welcome.
Thank you. First question is, what would the cost be at the 9280 residence for the main?
For the main, $7,755.
Okay. And the total cost, then?
The total cost, $10,857.0.
Okay. Right now, most of the residents on that are well, they have established wells. In, I believe it's chapter 15 of the building codes, let's see, section 1571, well operational permits. If we, if you guys put in a main, would you have to put in a lateral? Or would you be able to make a connection on the main such that a lateral can be added later? And then you can get, those residents, would they be able to get the permits to retain their well and not have to pay for the lateral?
What we would do is we would put the lateral out to the right-of-way line.
Okay.
Okay. And then after that, let's say, for instance, you choose five years down the road, you want to connect to it, you can still use your well.
Okay.
But it still has, you still have to go through all the state guidelines on maintaining, you know, the potable water in there. Let's just say you want to use it for your hose for irrigation or sprinkling or what have you. You still have to maintain the well itself. So you can't just let it go into a non-potable situation where, you know, you could have some contamination there.
Okay. I guess the next question would be, what caused the original main break to the subdivision? Was it lack of quality in the piping, or was it, like, what actually caused the entire failure?
It was corrosion. So in the city of Oak Creek, we have very corrosive soils. And the ductile iron pipe that we have in the ground, that is right around 1960, 1970, vintage, we do find that we do get a lot of corrosion. The majority of our breaks are corrosion holes. They're not shears, or they're not, you know, catastrophic breaks, if you will. So it was a corrosion hole.
Okay. Was there a plan, or is there a plan in the future to update that line to a more non-corrosive pipe or newer style of setup to mitigate that in the future?
At this point, no, because there's not a lot of breaks on that line. What we found is that even though the corrosion holes are the overwhelming majority of the breaks that we get, this line in particular doesn't have a whole lot of, there's not a whole lot of break history there.
Okay.
But there still is that potential.
So this whole project is basically developed as a backup to getting water to those, to that subdivision if there were to be another main break? Because the responsiveness time to get it fixed, or how would, like, why did you guys come up to that conclusion?
Well, that, and you'd like to have some redundancy in your system. So it wasn't acceptable to the commission to have that one feed take out 200 and some odd people. And consequently, they decided that this was the best route to go.
Okay.
Thank you for your questions. Second call for public comment. Third and final call for public comment on item six. At this point, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go to item seven, which is a consideration of Resolution Number 11693-040416, a final resolution authorizing water main and lateral improvements and levying special assessments against benefited properties on both sides of South 15th Avenue from 50 feet north of East Woodview Avenue to 1,100 feet north of East Woodview Avenue. Project number 16104 in the 3rd and 4th districts. Open it up to council members for comment. Alderman Kurkowski.
Ron, you said 9345 is owned by MMSD. Who owns 9300?
9300, yeah, let me just see here.
Well, it's not MMSD. It's a private owner.
As far as I know, it's a private owner, I believe.
Earlier, you indicated that if a homeowner doesn't want the lateral going to their house, he would just build the main going through the property and then go out to the right-of-way because they don't want the lateral.
Yeah. So the lateral would go from the main to the right-of-way line.
Okay. I understand that those two pieces of property aren't buildable because there's flood issues or whatever. But why, why would you not still levy an assessment on those two pieces of property because the water main is still going through to further the needs of the utility? I mean, I understand that you can't put a lateral there because, but why not make them at least pay their fair share?
Well, I looked into this quite a bit, actually. And, you know, and I consulted with the engineers over at the city. The reason, there's two reasons. Number one is the floodway. So the floodway basically on that, at least on that big 9345 property encompasses almost all of the property. So it basically renders the property unbuildable. And it's reflected in the certified survey map saying, no structure can be built on this property. Okay. Now, well, then the other property at 9300 is not as, we don't have as much information in terms of certified survey maps. That entire property is encompassed by floodway and a detention pond in the east side of it. So in an effort to be, we've gotta be fair, you know? If it's not buildable, they're not receiving a benefit from water going through their frontage.
I understand that, but they're still in the project area. And the, it seems to me that excluding those two pieces of property raises the cost to the property owners that are part of the project area, even those who may not want the lateral going, you know, to the main. So it seems to me, I understand that it may be floodplain, it may be not buildable, but they're still part of the project, and they should bear the cost because there's gonna be a benefit whether or not you can build on it. They're part of the project. They ought to share their, the part of the cost.
To your point, right now, the resolution that establishes the rates, $47 a foot for water main, and double that for per linear foot of the lateral. So in essence, what's happening here is, by subtracting that roughly $30,000 because of those properties, the utility picks that up. That's not foisted on the other homeowners. The $47 a foot is, that is a constant. It does not change. That's what, that's what we have through the resolution to work with. So as far as that goes, the extra, paying your fair share, extra money will not be foisted on the other homeowners by ordinance. I cannot do that. So everything still remains fair. The utility just has to pick up an extra amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mark?
Alderman Gale. Go ahead.
I lost it. I'll defer to Mark.
Alderman Verhalen.
Oh. Mark.
You sure? Go ahead. Okay.
I guess myself, I own property on Nicholson Road. We were a special assessed a number of years ago for amount of frontage that we own there. And I realize the costs seem like they're a little high and maybe perceived as a burden to some of the property owners there. But there's benefits at the end of the road when you go to sell your home with having city services, complete city services rather than half. Because especially where the services are provided in such close proximity already in the city here, when you go to sell a house, that's usually one of the first things that people ask about, you know? Is the sewer available? Is the water available? And even if you don't hook up, city services will be there. Second, I was made aware there's at least one property there would have shared well. And this type of situation works good when both property owners are there. But, you know, as soon as one property owner moves, and then, you know, sometimes agreements aren't upheld, and arguments ensue. And there's one other thing that I'd like to throw into the mix. You know, we had a horrendous fire in Oak Creek a couple of years ago. And if you have neighborhoods that don't have access to water, you don't have fire hydrants down the road. Now, some of these properties are in real close proximity to areas that are, you know, probably in the summertime, pretty good fire hazards. And I'd hate to see something happen over there where we had the chance to prevent it. All of that being said, I think, you know, people think that, you know, again, going to the cost, you have to realize that you can mitigate your costs over a number of years with the finance plan that the city's willing, or the water utility's willing to put out there. If you have a problem with your well, whatever it may be, you're looking at probably $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 out of pocket right now to fix your well. And then you still have the well. DNR has criteria that have to be met with wells also. So that's probably gonna get more stringent in years to come. So I mean, there's costs no matter which way you go. And I think biggest benefit to be had by all here is to really, really look serious at putting the service down the road.
Okay, Alderman Gale.
Ron, in our commission meeting at the water utility, you discussed that there was a couple, several residents actually spoke in favor of running service, I recall. Is that still the case?
I know of a few that have spoken in favor of it, but the majority are against it, from what I understand.
So there's?
From what I've seen here, you know?
12 homes impacted overall. But you did have, in the recent past, you had several residents spoke favorably about receiving the city service?
Yes, a few of them, yes.
Okay. Ron, remind me too, I seem to recall when we did the 10th Avenue County Line project, the, or maybe even the over by Shepherd Hills, folks were required to hook up after a certain period of time to the service?
That's not the case with water. That's the case with sewer.
Okay.
They don't have to hook up the water.
Okay. So if their wells performing, they can stay as they are, right?
Correct.
And the last thing is, I know we had discussed at the water utility commission meeting, for the integrity of the system and the benefit of the neighborhood and amount of service, this is the logical place to put the service. The alternative route, I know Alderman Toman is wondering about this, is well off American Avenue through the Carrollton subdivision and underneath the railroad right-of-way there. Is that a viable alternative, or how much would that impact in terms of costs?
It's a viable alternative. We would need to get an easement from that property at 9210. The bad news with that, so there's good and bad in that it's cheaper, and that it would require to get us, us to get an easement from that gentleman or lady, whoever that is. The bad news is that we have to come through a subdivision to feed another subdivision. So your flow is not gonna be as good if you get a main break where you have pressure decreases in the main. So.
So the decision making is very primary was integrity and overall health of the water system, correct?
Public health and flow, absolutely.
Alderman Toman, do you have something?
Yeah, I'd be honest with you, I don't like either alternative. You got a third one, Ron?
There is a third, there actually is a third one, and it's running a parallel main. If I could, if you see the, that short stretch of main between Highway 32 and North Brick Boulevard, do you see the piece of water main that I'm talking about?
Do we have any pointers? Laser pointers? Don't look at it.
We're on 32. Give me an address.
Oh, this is a little piece here. Ain't that right along 32?
Don't do us any good. Don't do us any good.
Put a parallel main in there as well.
What does that impact and what?
Will that would impact the?
Stay on the mic, Ron.
That would impact the entire subdivision.
Ron, you gotta stay on the mic.
Cost-wise?
Pardon?
Cost-wise?
Cost-wise, it's definitely, it's gonna be, it's cheap, for sure.
I'm talking about the impact on the residents.
No, there would be no accessible because they already have service.
Why aren't we considering, I mean, I was just kidding when I said I, is there a third alternative? And now there actually is one.
There actually is one. It's just, you know, to put a parallel main in there, it's, you know, what is it? It's not really, not really doing a whole lot. Plus, you got a larger pipe size in there.
I mean, I respect what you're saying about, and what Mark Verhalen said about, because this impacts half of his district and half of mine. I understand the utilities, decision-wise and flow-wise and quality, you know, what you have mapped out here going down 15th makes sense. I understand that. But by the same token, and I normally would go with that decision because I've done that in the past when it's impacted my residents. But in this case, or in past cases, actually, I get phone calls a lot of times that are split 50/50. Okay? In this case, I've gotten 100% negative phone calls. So even though bottom line, and what Mark had to say about the future of selling your home and increasing the value of your property, I'm with that. But nobody else seems to be concerned that actually lives there right now about that issue. So I, I'm either siding with this third alternative, which is absolutely new to me, tonight, what you just said about it.
So, this third alternative, what does it do exactly?
Well, you have to build a, a, a parallel main of the same size, uh, along that, along that stretch between thirty-two and, uh, and Northbrook there.
Which provides the backup you're looking for.
That would provide a backup as well.
And that would be on your dime.
Yeah, all right. So would the other backup plan.
Chief?
Um, I also would, uh, also piggyback onto Alderman Verhalen's comments on the fire protection, um, in the whole growth of the whole city. Uh, you also gotta look at the whole area, everything from Oak Creek, Franklin and Caldonya, that some of these dollars, I think, the utility should be putting back in to the city of Oak Creek where this fifteenth avenue alternative should be met on the fire protection aspect. Because if you take a gentleman that's working for the fire department that's gotta pull five inch, five hundred feet or more, and you get somebody injured, it's gonna cost in the hundreds of thousands of dollars long-term. So, take that into account also. So, the good thing is the benefit of the whole is to put it down fifteenth avenue and put the hydrants in with that to add for the fire protection and add for the safety of the firefighters.
So, you're at, you're advocating for the first position, then?
I'm advocating for the fifteenth avenue. One thing of the alternative that comes down off that small section off of the Carrollton subdivision is there's a high-pressure gas line that you have to look at also.
Okay.
There are other challenges in construction with the other alternatives.
Yep. Other questions or comments? Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, um, accept the, uh, authorization of water main and lateral improvements and levying special assessments against benefited properties on both sides of fifteenth avenue from fifty feet north of East Woodview Avenue to eleven or a hundred feet north of East Woodview Avenue. Project number one-six-one-zero-four. Excluding, all right, excluding, uh, ninety-three forty-five South Fifteenth and ninety-three-hundred South Fifteenth.
You stated the resolution. Resolution number is one-one-six-nine-three-dash-oh-four-oh-four-one-six. Do we have a second?
Kavitch will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
No.
Kirkowski.
No.
Kavitch.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
No.
Three-three.
Petey votes aye. Moving on to public hearing for item number eight, so resolution number one-one-six-nine-two-dash-oh-four-oh-four-one-six. It approves a certified survey map for the properties at ninety-one seventy-five, ninety-two-thirty-five and ninety-three twenty-five South Fifth Avenue and thirty-nine fifty-three and thirty-nine-seventy-five East American Avenue in the fourth district. City clerk, please read the resolution.
Actually, this isn't, this is not a public hearing. This is, uh, this is a resolution on the CSM.
Sorry about that.
But, you're correct on that. The next three items actually have to do with the water and sewer utility properties and on Fifth Avenue. Uh, this first one would approve a certified survey map for those properties. As you can see now, I'll try and rotate this for you. Hopefully. Strongly.
Go ahead, Doug, when you're ready.
And as Ron had indicated in, in past plan commission meetings, given the improvements that the water and sewer utility is making to the, uh, the plant at the location, they purchased a property which they now want to combine with the other properties in their holdings to comprise one parcel. The proper mechanism for doing this would be certi, a certified survey map. And that certified survey map has been recommended for approval by the plan commission after review. Uh, the next, next in line would be for the common council to approve the resolution combining those properties into one. Uh, the next two items on the agenda, actually, the public hearing and, and the rezoning would create a uniform zoning district for that entire combined property.
All set? Comments or questions on number eight? If none, a motion on, on number eight.
Toman will make a motion to adopt resolution number one-one-six-nine-two approving a certis, certified survey map for the properties at ninety-one seventy-five, ninety-two thirty-five and ninety-three twenty-five South Fifth Avenue and thirty-nine fifty-three and thirty-nine-seventy-five East American Avenue.
Gale will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Kavitch.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Number nine is a public hearing on a request by the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility to rezone the property at thirty-nine fifty-three East American Avenue from RS4, single-family residential to I-1 institutional and to amend the legal description, the existing conditional use permit affecting the properties at ninety-one seventy-five, ninety-two thirty-five and ninety-three twenty-five South Fifth Avenue and thirty-nine seventy-five East American Avenue to include the thirty-nine fifty-three East American Avenue property in the fourth district. City clerk will now read the public hearing notice.
Public hearing number two is to consider a request by the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility to rezone the property at three-nine-five-three East American Avenue, residential four, single-family residential to I-1 institutional and to amend the legal description and the existing conditional use permit affecting the properties at ninety-one twenty-five, ninety-two thirty-five and ninety-three twenty-five South Fifth Avenue and thirty-nine-seventy-five East American Avenue to include thirty-nine fifty-three East American Avenue. The applicant is City Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility. Property owner is the city of Oak Creek. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is March third, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the director of community development for the city of Oak Creek, and this is a public hearing on a request by the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility to rezone the property at thirty-nine fifty-three East American Avenue from RS4, single-family residential to I-1 institutional and as well to amend the legal description for the conditional use permit affecting the other utility properties to incorporate this into the conditional use permit for, which allows for the operation of the water treatment plant. Uh, as we had discussed as part of the certified survey map for this, this property, which was just approved by the, by the council, this property was acquired as part of the, uh, the plan is to expand the, the water treatment plant and as such is being incorporated and has been as, in fact, incorporated into the parcel, uh, for the entire utility. The property previously and still does have a RS4, single-family residential zoning. In order to make that truly part of the utility property now, we wanted to make sure that the same zoning and the same institutional zoning, as well as the conditions and restrictions which regulate that institutional zoning, cover that entire property. This is what that rezoning does. It rezones that property and it brings it into compliance and brings it into line with the conditional use permit under which the water and sewer utility operates for the entire water and, water treatment plant. Uh, this is a public hearing. I would ask if anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposed rezoning. To please fill out a form indicating your, your, uh, your desire to speak before the common council, turn that into the city clerk. Uh, the mayor will then announce your name and, uh, will announce an opportunity for you to speak. This is a public hearing and mayor will announce three times. Public hearing is now open.
First call for public comment on this item. Second call. Third call for public comment on item number nine. Seeing none on closed public hearing, we'll move to the discussion of number ten. Consideration of ordinance number two-seven-nine-eight. It approves the rezoning of the property at thirty-nine fifty-three East American Avenue from RS4, single-family residential to I-1 institutional and amending the legal description in section one of the conditional use permit for ninety-one seventy-five, ninety-two thirty-five, ninety-three twenty-five South Fifth Avenue and thirty-nine seventy-five East American Avenue to include the thirty-nine fifty-three East American Avenue in the fourth district. Good? Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, motion?
Toman will make a motion to adopt ordinance number two-seven-nine-eight approving the rezoning of the property at thirty-nine fifty-three East American Avenue from RS4, single-family residential to I-1 institutional and amending the legal description in section one of the conditional use permit for ninety-one seventy-five, ninety-two thirty-five and ninety-three twenty-five South Fifth Avenue and thirty-nine seventy-five East American Avenue to include thirty-nine fifty-three East American Avenue.
Guzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Kavitch.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Item number eleven is a public hearing on a request to repeal and recreate section seventeen-point-zero-eight-zero-eight-C, one-C, seventeen-point-zero-eight-zero-eight-C-three, seventeen-point-zero-eight-zero-eight-D-six and seventeen-point-zero-eight-zero-eight-E-one-E of the municipal code regarding outdoor lighting. City clerk?
Public hearing number three is to consider an ordinance to repeal and recreate section seventeen-point-zero-eight-zero-eight-C, sub-one, sub-C, seventeen-point-zero-eight-zero-eight, sub-C, sub-three, seventeen-point-zero-eight-zero-eight, sub-D, sub-six, seventeen-zero-eight-zero-eight, sub-E, sub-one-E of the municipal code regarding outdoor lighting. Date of notice is March third, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. Once again, good evening. Uh, this is a request to amend the city zoning code with respect to how we regulate and review plans for outdoor lighting. The, the major, uh, aspect of this change would be a lot, including, amending the zoning code, the code to allow LED fixtures, uh, the new technologies which have been incorporated, uh, you know, quite a bit throughout the city. And as a matter of fact, the city itself has been using LED fixtures and just updating our code to allow those types of fixtures. Um, there are a few other things that are, are attached to this as well, uh, changing how photometric plans are calculated, um, also expanding the language to, uh, better reflect how illumination levels under gas station canopies are considered and also establishing, uh, on the review of photometric plans that a, a point of zero would not be used in calculating illumination levels in uniform. And that's important because a lot of times, uh, a, an average, and I'm, I'm not an electrical engineer and, or, maybe Dan can speak to this, I don't know, but, uh, a lot of times when you ca, calculate the averages for illumination levels, if there was a spot that has zero, that really kind of, uh, skewed the results and-
Hold on one second. Can one of you guys close those doors back there? Uh, never mind, she's got it. Thank you.
Thanks. And it really can, tended to skew the results and, and created some, some situations where, uh, staff felt it really wasn't meeting the intent of the code. So, under this provision, you could no longer be using zero as a, as an averaging point for your photometric plan. Uh, this, these changes, these proposed changes have been recommended for approval by the plan commission. Again, this is a public hearing. If, I would ask if anyone has any question or comments regarding the proposed changes to section seventeen-point-oh-eight of the municipal code regarding lighting and photometric plans, to please give your name, fill out a form, uh, and present it to the city clerk. This public hearing is now open.
First call for public comment on this item. Second call. Third and final call for public comment on item eleven. Seeing none, we'll move to item twelve, which is a consideration of ordinance number two-seven-nine-six. It would amend section seventeen-point-zero-eight-zero-eight of the municipal code regulating photometric plans, illumination levels for refueling stations and including LED fixtures as a, as a permitted lighting type. Questions?
I'll give you a comment. I think Doug summed it up pretty well, really. This is just some housekeeping issues because LED lights were not included in our code. It's a new technology coming forward. Um, Jim Perino, our, our electrical inspector, really felt this needed to be addressed going on. As far as calculation goes, Doug is right. They take that zero average with average foot candles. Now, it's lumens. Uh, it gets kinda mixed and it drags the averages down and you don't get the proper lighting you, you really need. So, he's really trying to keep us on par with where we should be and where the city's always been. Uh, so, really, to me, it, it was much needed and, um, it's great that Jim brought it up to our attention and made these, these changes when, when we did, as we're in his building phase.
Anything else? Motion on twelve.
Kavitch will make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-seven-ninety-six, amending section seventeen-point-zero-eight-zero-eight of the municipal code regulating photometric plans, illumination levels for refueling stations and including LED fixtures as a permitted lighting type.
Guzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kavitch.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
All right.
Under new business, item thirteen is a consideration of resolution number one-one-six-eight-eight-dash-oh-four-oh-four-one-six. It authorizes the dissolution of tax incremental district number four of the city of Oak Creek in the first district. City administrator?
This, uh, action tonight will continue, I think, a, a long, um, string of fiscal of responsibility and prudent use of tax increment districts. We've met all of our obligations in, uh, Tiff District number four. Uh, we're closing it out three years before it could be. They generally have twenty-year, uh, life cycles on them. Uh, those of you who've been around for a while know that in the early years of this district, we issued about two-point-two million dollars in bonds to pay for infrastructure. Uh, there was some difficulty in the early years of paying the, uh, principal and interest on that. Uh, more recently, we had a couple of nice buildings come into the plan. We had expanded the district to the west side of Hall, uh, that was ADT. We also had a fairly large, uh, tire warehousing facility, uh, ADK, I think, uh, that was built. Uh, they both added pretty decently to, uh, the, uh, the value in the district. Uh, we've met all our obligations and, uh, uh, the, uh, the council had previously, uh, on the request or on the recommendation of staff, uh, asked that this district be closed as soon as possible so it could help fund, uh, some of the, uh, two thousand fifteen actually, uh, increases that we had provided to employees at that point. So, this district, uh, follows that, um, method. Uh, I would report that the city will be getting fifty-seven thousand dollars a year in additional, uh, taxes into the general fund as opposed to earmarked for the Tiff Fund, our other taxing districts. I see Tim is here for the school district. We'll get over a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars returned. That'll go to M A T C, the school district and so forth. And I would only point out that, uh, the, the, the taxpayers will also benefit because we can only capture fifty percent of the increase. The other fifty percent will actually go to around our three billion dollars. So, it's, it's incrementally seen by the other taxpayers, but it will provide relief to the other taxpayers. Um, so, this district did exactly what it was supposed to when it was formed. It had one-point-two million dollars in value, uh, as of our last valuation date, twenty-three-point-nine million, so almost a twenty-fold increase in the value over that period of time. So, that's what they're supposed to do. I think it's another good example of, of responsibly using these districts and achieving, uh, the overall goal from basically, uh, a non-functioning farm field to a, uh, a, a nice business, uh, and warehouse and manufacturing center.
So, for the naysayers, we don't just create and we also close them.
We do.
All right. Questions or comments?
Uh, just one question, Jerry. Within that Tiff in one of the rental buildings, didn't we have a tenant in there that was exempt out of the Tiff?
We, we did. They lost that exempt status two or three years ago. That was, We Energies was actually in there for a period of time, uh, when they were working on the plant. There was actually some payments that were made part of that. Uh, there's actually a new tenant in that building, uh, that, uh, so it's fully occupied and it's, uh, paying taxes now, so. Now, he's telling, he's giving me more letters. M D G.
Okay.
Uh, so, so, uh, that's right. That was the case and, uh, that's, uh, part of the reason we went from a, a deficit to a positive.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion.
Kowski, make a motion to approve resolution number one-one-six-eight-eight-dash-oh-four-oh-four-one-six, authorizing the dissolution of tax incremental district number four of the city of Oak Creek.
Kavitch will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Kavitch.
Aye.
All right. I'm gonna jump ahead to fifteen and go, I'm gonna go fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and come back to fourteen. So, fifteen is an informational update on Verizon wireless lease.[1751.37]
I'll update on that and I see we've got Tim Culver from the school here as well. The council may remember there was some discussion that there needed to be in place by today agreements with the city in Verizon and the school district in order to, for the school district to proceed on some work on the Pugh's Road site that they had looked to do. We do not have that agreement in front of you tonight. So by the school's action, there is no longer an effort being made to relocate that tower to the city's site. Primarily, the problem that we had come into is Verizon could not get the equipment moved by the, there was another September thirtieth date that it needed to move. There were a number of permits that needed to happen, which were news to, I think, a number of us in this process. We don't have to go through that process. Verizon felt they did and couldn't meet some of the timelines. And so my understanding is the school district is, at least for the next ten years, looking to keep the cell tower at the current site. I think the school had action on this item tonight and I think Tim could have reported on that if the council would ask him to.
If the superintendent wishes to comment on what action, if any, they took. Otherwise, I would say this, is there any harm in keeping the window of opportunity open if at some point in the future they decided to, they wanted to move to our tower?
No, I don't think so. And the city is going to be proceeding to be able to accept three different providers on our tower. We're looking to, we're gonna be bringing to the council some work that we've got Strand Associates. It's an engineering firm that we hired to be able to put at the base of the tower a structure to be able to locate the equipment. So we're proceeding on that as well as with the access. We do have another carrier that's interested in the tower and we'll be bringing that agreement to you. So we would be ready to accept another carrier, actually two additional carriers.
If the school district at some point in the near future decided they did want to proceed, given whatever timeline Verizon set up, would we be willing to have that conversation?
I think so, absolutely. I see no reason why we can't have the same conversation that we had before. I think the question to the council would be, would they still be willing to commit the resources that we did before? I assume the answer is yes. So if that could happen, I think that we could proceed, yes.
My comment is essentially the same one I made two or four weeks ago. For the benefit of the community to have one tower versus two towers, I think is significant. The current location of that tower, while it made sense for the city, does not make sense for the school district.
I think there's general agreement for that.
So I would say, whatever the school district decides to do, obviously that's their choice. That's their mission and their progress. They'll have to chart that themselves. But if we keep an open mind on this, if at some point in the future, near or otherwise, they want to move the tower, I don't see what's preventing us from being able to do that.
I would agree with that. There was nothing that would prevent us from doing that.
Okay. Any other comments? Go ahead, Alderman Kirkowski.
Jerry, I may have this wrong, but wasn't the main issue here, the cost of removing the foundation of that tower? And it was coupled with the fact that Verizon had to move their stuff out of there? And weren't, wasn't the city willing to pay for Verizon to move their stuff off of that tower to potentially to the tower at the fire station?
Yeah, the council agreed to pay up to two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars to move the equipment. So that was one issue. The other issue, where there were some very definite dates that the school district had established for that, one was today in terms of having that agreement. And the second date was September thirtieth, which was the date that all of that moving from the current location to the centennial location was to have occurred. As we had our discussions with Verizon, it became apparent that they were not going to be able to meet that September thirtieth date.
They weren't going to be able to move their equipment by September thirtieth date, correct?
That's correct. And part of that had to do with a permitting and approval process that they go through with the FCC and other agencies. There's actually quite a string of approvals they need to go through. We were somewhat surprised, well, not somewhat, we were surprised by that because we don't have to go through those same permitting approvals for our communication towers and we were surprised with how long that process was going to take.
I'm not a cell phone tower expert, won't claim to be, but when, bear with me, little story here. When the bowling congress on Seventy Sixth Street decided, I mean, they closed the shop and they sold the property to Walmart, there was a cell phone tower there. And again, it was not in the location that Walmart liked it to be, kind of like what we have here. The cell phone carrier put up a temporary tower so that things could be accomplished and then life went on. And then at some point, the permanent tower was built and it replaced the temporary tower. I understand there's FCC in the government and all those forms and regulations and stuff, but it seems to me if Verizon was really, really serious about this, some expert within Verizon would have said, can we put up a temporary tower and then work through all these permits and stuff like that so that they keep their service, the school district gets that tower out of their building plans and then eventually get over to the fire department? I mean, that's, you may not have the answers to that, but that's my comment.
No, I do. I'll respond to that and it just doesn't make intuitive sense that they shouldn't be able to do that. The, I'll make that one further. The tower already exists. The tower that they would be moving to already exists. So it's not as if it needs to get permitted. But as we talked with Verizon, it's their corporate policy because they want to stay in the good graces of FCC. This is what we were told, that they have to go through a SHPO review, a NEPA review, and that's a state historic preservation office. The other is a national environmental. And apparently that is their corporate requirement to move. So their requirements have foiled, I think, the attempts that we've made in the school district made to accomplish that.
Right. I understood there was a tower already standing, but I just threw that out there.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not even going to a temporary. Tower exists. Put it on.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So I mean, at this point, it's the school district as it's been the whole time. It's their call, what they want to do. I say let's keep open the window of opportunity if we can make something work. I think it obviously demonstrates cooperative relationship between the two and we'll see what happens. Yeah, come on up. Superintendent Culver. Could you just state the name and the city's address, district's address?
I'm Tim Culver. I'm the superintendent. Seventy Six Thirty Tenth Street, I think, is the address. I should know that. I just wanted to thank the city. This, a year ago, the board voted to build the shell of an auditorium in a space and what blocked that, what made it sense at that time, out of fund balance, was while construction of the building's going up, there'd be considerable savings, so like build it at the same time. And what frustrated us ultimately in many ways, we're working since September on a variety of ways to have to relocate the cell phone tower. We looked at building another one of our own and I want to compliment the city for being very cooperative. And the problem for us with the, it wasn't, we arbitrarily picked April fourth and September thirtieth, is this is when we need to bid the stuff to get the savings in the bids and the thirtieth is when we need to start construction of the auditorium shell or there were no savings for that if it was delayed. And so then it became, it didn't make any sense to move the cell phone tower at that point in time. So that's where those dates came from. And I think the city's been more than cooperative, offered to lower some of the lease rates, offered to pick up some of the costs of doing that. We were gonna give up revenue but get space, but the difficulty of dealing with a large corporate company through attorneys is it's just hard to get movement in a time. So at this point, it didn't make sense for us to proceed with that. The savings aren't there any longer. And so we're gonna kind of go back to the drawing board and discuss that. And we're certainly open to discuss further things. And I just don't want anyone to think it wasn't because we in the city didn't try to work this out. It's several permitting things and corporate policies and things that stood in the way that frustrated our ability to be able to accomplish at appropriate savings what could have been accomplished. But I just want to thank Jerry and Melissa and everybody for trying because it was really, it's very frustrating that we didn't get there, but thank you.
Sure. We can certainly blame it on attorneys exclusive of any that are in this room. All right. Any other questions or comments on this? All right. Moving forward. Thanks for that information, Superintendent Culver. Item sixteen is a motion to renew the marketing services contract with Connect the Dots LLC for the one-year period ending on December thirty first, two thousand sixteen. Come on up, Mr. Dignor. And pull up, mic down.
Arden Dignor, eighty-five forty South Pennsylvania Avenue. This, to me, is a part of this number fourteen too, is this Connect the Dots. Because if you look over the type of work that's been let out, apparently this individual is able to override the council members, the open hearing of the residents. I particularly pointed out the six hundred and twenty-five parking spaces that they have on Pennsylvania Avenue. But that is one of his goals, to get that thing done. And I object to this runaround of our elected officials. And it's the same thing in item number fourteen. You look at that personnel committee, you see administrator, six pages worth of rules. And essentially what you're doing is you're taking the ability of the populace to contact and have any input or have minimized input into the city functions of government. Years ago, the government was set up to, as a service to the citizens, not to be a dictator. Because that's exactly what I heard from one of the aldermen a few years ago. It's a part-time job. He doesn't have any responsibility. It's all the staff. All right then. That is not the way America works, is by a dictatorship. And I see with this six pages worth of rules.
Mr. Dignor, this one, this item is specifically talking about-
Yeah, okay. And the same way, same way with this Connect the Dots. To me, it's a way to hire individuals to do certain types of work that has been needed because of the work that we've had to do in remediating the old Delphi part. And yet, yet, there's different ways this thing can be accomplished. Many times, it cannot be done exactly that time schedule, as you've heard on the school problem. And yes, the city administrator and the council have done a marvelous job with this new Drexel Town Square.
Not the mayor though, just the council and administrator?
But, what was that?
You had it right the first time, Mark.
Oh, well, all right then. But yeah, that's what I'm thinking. It's, you know, we're talking about, I have to keep on, so I'll continue my tirade later.
All right. Just if I may, just addressing some of Mr. Dignor's earlier comments, I mean, the position of Mr. Billington in no way usurped the ability or authority of the Plan Commission or the common council in deciding or hearing or making recommendations on regulatory matters. This was a position that was always intended to work kind of behind the scenes to kind of attract new businesses, to kind of network so that we can be on the cutting edge of trying to find out where the interests lie so that we can get them in there and get them through our regulatory process.
If you're looking at fiscal impact, I'll just look west. They have an economic development director and I don't know what they're paying him, but I'm sure it's not ten thousand dollars a year, twelve thousand dollars a year that we're paying Connect the Dots. So if I'm looking at the opportunities that we get from the twelve thousand, is it twelve thousand?
Twelve thousand.
I can cite a couple of specific examples that are gonna be announced soon that justify why we would do that, so.
I mean, the one thing I would note is that the funding for this, I don't wanna call it position because it's really consultant position, is through Fund thirty-one dollars, which historically have been through room tax. As you are well aware, the formula for the disbursement of room tax dollars is changing substantially and significantly in two thousand seventeen. Therefore, it's our recommendation that the contract only go through the end of this year and then the council can make a decision on whether or not to extend that, given what we know to be the circumstances at that time.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I've got a comment.
Go ahead, Alderman Verhaenl.
I realize Mr. Billington was put on as a consultant before I was elected alderman, but it strikes me, I just picked out one comment on the council report, which mentions as of this date, it hasn't resulted in any business expansion or relocation decisions based on lease generated by the firm. So that means we've been paying this firm over a year and four or five months for basically zero to very limited results. And I realize it's not a lot of money, but we do have other entities that are responsible or get involved in bringing businesses, entertaining different options as to companies moving to the city. One is Doug Seymour, the other is our city administrator, as well as the CDA entity. So, you know, like I said, it's not that it's a lot of money, but, you know, if we're not generating solid results and the mayor just said some things may be coming in in the near future, but, you know, I like to see us get the most bang for our buck. And if we're not seeing results after sixteen months or very limited results where it doesn't pay to keep the person or firm on, I think it's time to go down a different avenue. It's my opinion.
Alderman Kirkowski?
I agree with Doug and the fact that at the end of this year, the whole funding for this concept is gonna change dramatically and which, so I would agree only going to the end of the year. Before I was on the CDA, I kind of was skeptical of the whole, this whole process. And then we weren't getting monthly or quarterly reports from Connect the Dots. And so we're getting them now, at least I would assume most of us are getting those. And then I've had a chance to interact with Mr. Billington during the CDA meetings. Alderman Verhaenl is right. I mean, we, he hasn't, the paragraph says there hasn't been any, nothing has resulted in this direct business expansion.
Can I just clarify that for the moment?
Let me just, I'll finish up with Doug.
Go ahead.
But the fact is, we have somebody out there for a very low amount of money who's out there beating the bushes to try and get people to come in. And I don't think we have anybody on staff who can devote that type of time to go out there and beat the bush and try and find people. So I think it's money well spent.
The reason I wanted to clarify that is because you're right in the staff report. I mean, contractually, there have been no success, successful projects that directly resulted from this individual. Because under the contract, had that been the case, then there was a success fee that would have been due. Mr. Billington has done a pretty significant amount of work and good job of working with some of our clients who actually have been developing Oak Creek. It's just that they haven't been, he hasn't been directly responsible for the recruitment and thus wouldn't be eligible for that success fee. But I think he's, has done a good job. One more thing, I'm sorry. In the world of, you know, site selection, economic development, I've heard it says that if you get ten percent of the people that you, you know, submit for and are out there chasing, you're doing a good job. So it's, you know, it's a very competitive world and I agree with Mark that, you know, we don't have any direct success stories that we can point to as a result of this. But it's kind of the world that we live in that you have to have someone out there doing the chasing if you want to be in the ballgame.
Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment in terms of the success. We've been extremely close twice. We had a very large company that Mr. Billington had identified for us that we worked very hard in the Oakview Business Park. It was a hundred and fifty thousand square foot manufacturing and the manufacturer in the end decided to not relocate, but we were very, very close. Matter of fact, there was a contract for purchase there and it was rescinded on the last day it could. That's how close that one was. We had another one that was a foreign manufacturer from Switzerland that is still a potential out there, but was very close. And then the mayor's talked about, we've got some that are out there. So it follows up on Doug's comments is a lot of work has to go in these. Oftentimes, they peter out in the end, but they're generally pretty good successes when you get them, so it doesn't take many. And we were, as I said, very close twice and we've got some that are, we're working
Given what Jerry just said, does that directly relate to Gary Billington's work? What you just said? It does?
Yes.
Okay. So we are getting something, even though something hasn't directly been generated, we are getting benefit out of this.
Yeah, he is identifying resources that typically Doug or I are not able to. And quite frankly, all of you give us resources. I mean, I'll get from the mayor, from Ken, or from any, if you know somebody's looking, you'll tell us that, we'll follow that. Gary's been able to get into markets that typically we're unaware of, and is able to identify some of those, has put us together with folks, and I think it merits a continuation, at least through the end of this year.
Has he made any of that seven and a half to 10%?
No, he has not.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I got one follow-up. Let Chris go first.
Alderman Kukowski?
How long have we had a contract with Gary?
Two and a half years.
Right, okay.
Alderman Verhaenel.
Well, not to be closed-minded, but I guess I'm willing to let the contract go till the end of the year, and if at that time we don't see any results that back up the statement in this report, then I would definitely say it's time to go down a different road.
Okay, anybody else?
I just want to echo Doug and Jerry's. I find Gary's services are very useful to the city's efforts. I know we've been in a period of some significant economic activity, and we do not have the in-house effort to do what Gary does out there in the community to potentially look at new entities coming into this community. So I think he serves a very valuable service out there. He facilitates a significant amount of interaction with the business community and economic development folks that we're typically not going to see unless you have someone in that role. So I think it's money well spent. And I think, you know, I would agree, the timing at the end of the year, given the CDA funding mechanism change, is appropriate, but I think for the time being, it's $12,000, that's not a lot of mileage.
I agree completely. Any other questions? Alderman McKavich?
I run across Gary at quite a few development events. I'm there for different reasons, I'm not in this capacity here. So at least somebody from the city is represented there, and really, this is where you really run across these people to find out what's really brewing and what they may be thinking. So again, I'd give it some time, these developmental issues take time. I know we're a little bit spoiled at the speed at which Drexel Town Square kind of sprouted out of the ground, and I mean, it's a quick build-out here. But this isn't the normal process for a project quite like this. So it does take time to get all the pieces in place. Again, we just are not staffed to that capacity to have those people at these places. Believe me, I'm that way myself in my own office. It's tough to be everywhere at one place. And with all the moving pieces at City Hall, it's really a pretty cost-effective way to get there.
Motion.
Charles, you can make a motion to renew the marketing services contract with Connect the Dots LLC for one year, the one-year period ending on December 31, 2016.
Give us a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kukowski.
Aye.
Kukowski.
Aye.
Verhaenel.
Item 17 is a consideration of Resolution Number 11694-040416. It establishes the date and time of the 2016 Board of Review.
We are bringing this forward to advise the council that Board of Review, the assessment role, is not expected to be completed by May 23, 2016, which is the first regular statutory meeting of the 2016 Board of Review. Board of Review will most likely occur during the month of August 2016. I don't know, Melissa, if you want to add anything to the resolution.
I think our clerk summarized it very well. The bottom line is our code has this additional provision regarding Board of Review. That's why this resolution is being brought before the council.
Any questions? Motion.
Yeah, we'll move to approve Resolution Number 11694-0404116, excuse me, 16, establishing the date and time of the 2016 Board of Review.
Kukowski, give us a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kukowski.
Aye.
Kukowski.
Aye.
Verhaenel.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
I know I said I was going back to 14. Doug, are you doing 19? Jerry, is that a long one?
No.
Let's do 19, under engineering. It's a consideration of Resolution Number 11689-040416, a resolution to enter into a longitudinal pipeline agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad Company for work within the railroad right-of-way for the South Fifth Avenue relocation project. Project number 12026 in the 4th District, Gary.
This is an agreement we would have preferred not to have needed, but the engineers have assured me we do. There's a small pipe section that has to cross at the, just north of Old Ryan Road, into the railroad right-of-way. Apparently, the water can't get there without this pipe. And as part of that pipe crossing, the railroad requires that we enter into this agreement, and there's a $2,000 fee. From this point, the water goes in the tension area that's shown on the map, it goes to the west, towards the railroad right-of-way. It travels up to the north then, and then heads back west across city property. It's water and sewer property to get to Fifth Avenue, so it goes in kind of a circuitous way. But this is necessary to be able to get the water where it needs to go.
Okay. Any questions? Motion.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11689, a resolution to enter into a longitudinal pipeline agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad Company for work within the railroad right-of-way for the Fifth Avenue relocation project, project number 12026.
Kukowski, give us a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kukowski.
Aye.
Verhaenel.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kukowski.
Aye.
City Administrator?
I just want to make a point, we had a pretty good rain last week. In the historic days, that rain would have created stormwater problems throughout the city. I once again want to commend, you know, the engineering staff, the hard efforts they've made, and the resources the council has pledged. That hardly ever happens anymore. And, you know, and a rain like we had, you know, would have been really, would have been problematic. So I hope you didn't find any problems where it hit.
No, no, I just said, don't say that it'll never happen again.
No, I don't want to say it didn't, but I think it's important to point out that the city had a really significant problem, made a significant effort to resolve it, and generally has been. And, you know, it's the little things like even the agreement that you had tonight that helped in terms of moving the water where it needs to go.
All right. Circling back to item 14, it's a motion to concur with the Personnel Committee and take action on the following items relating to the position of city administrator. Item A is the recruitment timeline. Item B is the job description. Item C is obtaining proposals from executive search firms. HR Director's here to answer your questions. Why don't you let me get started, and then we'll bring you up, Mr. Degenner. Who's going to speak on behalf of the Personnel Committee?
I can.
Okay.
Becky Shermer, Human Resources Manager. The job description and the recruitment timeline were discussed by the Personnel Committee at three sessions during the month of March. So the goal of the recruitment timeline is to have a city administrator begin on or before September 19, 2016. And the first, one of the first steps in that timeline is the job description, so that we can get proposals from possible executive recruitment firms, so that they know what they're recruiting for.
Okay. Questions from the council?
Comments?
Alderman McKavich, and then Mr. Alderman Verhaenel.
As part of Personnel Committee, I mean, we looked at this, we had done this number of years before. Again, we had talked about the timeline to get somebody on board with Jerry's pending retirement in fall. We set apart, we set out on rather an aggressive timeline. We feel it's doable as long as we do our due diligence and stay on track with this. So if you look at the timeline, it moves pretty briskly, but if we stay on task, we think this is obtainable. Mike, Ken, you got anything?
There was consensus on Personnel?
Yeah. Yeah, we had set out and, you know, we had focused on getting someone on board to overlap with Jerry for a month, month and a half. We thought that was important. So we'd set out a timeline that got that done, we back-engineered it.
Okay.
Just to address one comment made by a previous citizen. The purpose of the Personnel Committee to review this, this job review, this recruitment timeline speaks to, speaks to a process that doesn't circumvent anything. When we make this decision and a recommendation for what you see in front of you tonight, it comes from three members of the Personnel Committee, and we emphasize that the rest of the council needs to see this, they need to review it, and it needs to be discussed in public. So we're not, we're not trying to go around anything. This is all out in the open. And the mayor has had some input in on this process, too, so it's all above board. That's the point I'd like to make.
It's always that struggle for people to understand that all of the behind-the-scenes work is actually vital, and it's done in the committee level, and that's where that stuff happens, so that you're not spending eight hours at a common council meeting trying to hash it all out. That's where the homework's done, that's where all the discussion happens. You have three, you have half of the council is represented there, they will make a recommendation, which they did in this case, and that's, I think you get the best results. Alderman Verhaenel.
Yeah, I was just looking over the job description, and not to nitpick the Personnel Committee, but I think there's just a few little things that got to be tweaked or maybe added. And I don't know, I'd maybe leave it up to the city attorney, maybe to draft, maybe to correct language if it's deemed that it has to be changed. But on page two, let's see, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down, I think it could be simplified because it kind of sets out the existing developments, and in a year or two or three, some of those may not, some of that language may not pertain. So I think it could be shortened up, we'd say possibly assist the mayor and common council in assessing options related to major city developments located within the city. I think that would pretty much cover whatever you wanted to cover, and it doesn't specifically say which projects, because like I say, those projects will be coming to an end, and then you'll have to add maybe another list of them. But it does allow the mayor and council to work in conjunction with the city administrator, or direct him to work on big projects that do come to the city at the behest of the body here. It takes out the specifics and kind of covers the same thing.
Already says it. In the first part, it says options related to major development, and then it, and the following, the rest of the statement just gives some examples. So I don't know, to me, that covers it.
Okay. What was your other point?
There's a couple other ones. And I think it, I don't know if you guys in Personnel really discussed this at length, but as everyone's aware, there was some conflict as to the authority and the directives given to, given to the clerk and treasurer. And most of these paragraphs refer to city employees. Our clerk and treasurer are both elected officials, and I think there should be a language added that anything over and above statutory requirements by those two people, they should be working in conjunction with the city administrator, rather than there being an assumption that they have to take direction from him when, in fact, they're elected officials, just like everyone sitting up here.
Our point I make, where exactly are you intending to interject that?
Well, I guess it's something to be added at the end of it, or, you know, because there was, there was issues floating around those two particular departments, on more than one occasion, I would hate to see that type of thing continue when we have the opportunity now to put language in the job description where, you know, where they have to work together, they work in conjunction with each other, rather than taking orders from the city administrator.
And how would you want, in what parts would you say they have to work in conjunction?
Well, on anything that's not statutorily part of their job, because there's a number of occasions, I guess in the past year, where the clerk and treasurer were asked to help with a project under the direction of the city administrator, and things didn't turn out exactly the way they were supposed to, I guess, in the eyes of both parties involved. And I think there should be something, you know, a little bit more concrete, so people know where they stand.
Other than the mayor, the city administrator doesn't work in conjunction with anybody.
Well, I guess there's...
The city administrator runs the day-to-day operations.
I understand it, I understand it. And the clerk and treasurer, I guess, according to their statutory duties, they follow the state statutes and the performance of those duties.
But you and I both know that their roles are, have morphed into a lot more than their statutory.
Well, they haven't morphed into that, I guess.
Yeah, they have.
Beverly Breder was at a Personnel meeting a number of months ago, and she's the past city clerk, was for a long time. And there was a lot of duties that she assumed at the direction of past mayors, and a lot of things that were put on her plate by past city administrators that really didn't fall under her statutory duties. But for that reason, I guess there should be language in there where these opportunities do come up, that, you know, there should be a, more of a working together rather than taking orders from.
Becky, there's language here that says collaborate with, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Could you tell me where it's at?
Most of it is under personnel duties and responsibilities, but there's also collaboration on page two, item three, with the mayor, common council president, and city clerk.
As to working on the common council agendas, but that's a specific task, just one specific task.
Page four also, under knowledge, skill, and ability, second paragraph.
Hold on one second. One of the things that I, when I met with Becky, that I wanted to introduce or expand on was the idea of collaboration between all people that work for the city, for reasons like you're mentioning. But when we make these changes, or when we draft a job description, and we're going to be drafting a lot of job descriptions in the next year for almost every position in the city, we shouldn't ever be thinking about the personalities or the individual that's in the position currently. We should always be thinking forward, however, how long that means, as long as we're a city. That's what the intent in my mind is for this discussion. So whatever conflict you saw, others might not see. And I think, to her credit, the HR Director has done a really good job in crafting a job description that took into account my input and the other individuals' input and talking within the building, to get the best possible description of what the real job is. You're never going to capture everything by a state statute, because that's not the real world. We, you face decisions, and you have to make decisions every day that just come up. So while I understand that collaboration is important, it's not the only thing. And there has to be somebody that's calling the shots within the building. In this setup, I'm a part-time mayor. We have a full-time city administrator who's called upon to make some large decisions on some very large projects, in addition to running the day-to-day activities in City Hall. So I think the HR Director has put together a job description with the help of the Personnel Committee, with the help of some other individuals, that best captures what I think that role should be. We can have disagreement, that's certainly fine, and we'll always have disagreement. But I think you're not going to get a perfect document, and you're not going to capture every possible scenario, and that's why the word collaboration is important, because it sets the tone for what that position should be. City Administrator?
I don't think I can add any more to the discussion.
Other questions or comments? Was there a last piece that you wanted to talk about, obtaining proposals? And then I'll bring you up, Mr.... Let me just hear from her, then I'll bring you up.
Yes, in order to stay with the timeline, we do need to do, get proposals, and the Personnel Committee has recommended the four that did presentations in March of 2010.
Can you read them to the record?
That would be the Waters Consulting Group, Bob Marine Associates, Springstead Incorporated, and Strategic Government Resources, in addition to four additional executive recruiting groups. That would be Waters &amp; Company, which is also a Springstead Company, Voorhees Associates, which is also known as GovHRUSA.com, the... Committee has recommended the four that did presentations in March of 2010.
Can you read the, read them to the record?
That would be The Waters Consulting Group, Bob Marine Associates, Springstead Incorporated, and Strategic Government Resources, in addition to four additional executive recruiting groups. That would be Waters and Company, which is also a Springstead company, Voorhees Associates, which is also known as GovHRUSA.com, The Mercer Group, and then Renee Narlock and Associates, who used to be with Bob Marine Associates, but now is on her own.
Okay. Any comment or questions from the council on that one?
Becky, I just had a, the timeline, just a small probably adjustment of the language. On the April 19th and May 3rd dates, under the responsible party, I think the April 19th, responsible party should probably be more along the lines of the team that was chosen on April 4th is going to narrow the field during that timeframe. And on May 3rd, the Personnel Committee will recommend a common council, and the common council will take action on the 3rd.
Any other questions or comments?
Do we have a, is there a budget for this that we're looking at, or?
What was the budget we set?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand. What did we spend last time?
I think close to that.
Six years ago?
Yep.
Okay. No other questions or comments, motion on 14.
Sorry?
Oh, Mr. Degen, how could I forget? Sorry.
Thank you. I've been a great supporter of responsible government officials to the people. Now, whenever, being an engineer, I'm familiar with the fact that Wisconsin used to have their own codes. Now the stack is this high international codes. How can anyone possibly be involved in any particular part without having computers in every pocket? So they could download every page, and this is what I see is happening. Here we've got six pages of rules, and yet we know that this work that's been done in the city from the beginning of getting the Drexel interchange was a life's work of our former city attorney. And he has been built on. Essentially, we have in place the type of, of, type of, uh, building or type of structure that we, he had in mind, and that feels as far as he can go on the lakefront, in the same way with Drexel Town Square. You have worked diligently, especially the administrator, president administrator, getting all these codes. I mean, it's, of course, all administrators spends their entire time writing out forms. Is this the way? We have to accomplish these things by page after page, and I want to get back into, into this requirement. If we have these pages and stacks like IRS manuals, I don't know how the stack goes now, but it's got to be cut back. Everyone knows that in order for, be, be profitable, you've got to cut the fat or the items that are not needed anymore, and I say, we don't need this kind of, uh, large administrative ability because the work has been done and laid out at Oak Creek. Do we have to pay 120 plus 20 plus personnel? We are then approaching the salary of the governor of the state of Wisconsin. Keep that in mind. You're within $20,000 of the 100, I believe it's 148, last I saw it on Blue Book. And that is the kind of money you're thinking of spending for a city administrator. I see away with it. We cut, got to cut back. And there's a timeline that put out already last time, two times ago, where it sets out the schedule. It isn't new. We've gone through it before. And we, do we need all this kind of stuff, or do we need city clerks and aldermen that are responsible and responsive to the citizens?
Thank you, Mr. Degen. Can I get a motion on 14?
Yeah, we'll move to concur with the, sorry, Personnel Committee, Personnel Committee and take action on the following item relating to personnel, position of city administrator, approve the recruitment timeline, approve the job description, approve obtaining proposals from the executive search firms.
Toman will second.
Toman seconds, roll call.
Alderman Kavitch?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
All right, so we go into Licensing Committee and Alderman Kirkowski.
License Committee met on March 24, 2016, minutes are attached. Recommendations are as follows. Item 20, Kirkowski will make a motion to deny an operator's license to Brenda Fleury, 2835 West College Avenue, Milwaukee, for falsification by omission.
You'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Kavitch?
Aye.
21?
21. Kirkowski will make a motion to deny an operator's license to Edward Dickpin, 230 West Rainbow Ridge, Drive Oak Creek, for falsification by omission and for being a habitual offender.
You'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Kavitch?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
22?
Kirkowski will make a motion to deny an operator's license to Steven Hoskins, 6100 West State Street, Milwaukee, for falsification by omission and for being a habitual offender.
You'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Kavitch?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
23?
Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a transient merchant license to BCI Exteriors, Inc., N57W13566, Carmen Avenue, Menominee Falls, and for the following salesperson's Peter Quayle address listed.
You'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Kavitch?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
24?
Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a special event permit to Nobdive Gill, event coordinator for Chardikala 6K Memorial Run Walk, Seek Temple.
Chardikala.
Thank you for, Seek Temple of Wisconsin, 7512 South Howell Avenue, for a run-walk event on August 6, 2016.
You'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Kavitch?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
25?
Kirkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to the following six individuals listed on the agenda.
You'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kavitch?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
1026?
Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a transient merchant license to The Window Store Home Improvements, 2706 South 163rd Street, New Berlin, and the four salespersons listed on the agenda.
You'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Kavitch?
Aye.
All right, item 27 is a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.851E to discuss the terms of the possible Second Amendment to the Tax Incremental District 11 Finance Development Agreement with the Oak Creek Medical Developer, Developer, Inc., HSA-Frederd Hospital Development. Alderman Gail?
Gail, we'll move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E to discuss the terms of the possible Second Amendment to the Tax Incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement with the Oak Creek Medical Developer, Inc., HSA Frederd Hospital Development.
Guzekowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Kavitch?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
At this time, we'll go into closed session. When we return, we'll turn the mics back on, and we will come back in open session.
Gail moves to reconvene in the open session.
Guzekowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Kavitch?
Aye.